Happy National Donut Day to everyone in attendance today. And there are free donuts at Burke's Bakery for anybody who wants to walk down there to get one, right? Just don't tell them the mayor sent you there. But welcome to our Dable City Commission, a special call meeting this morning. Day is Friday, June 7th, and time is about 8:35. And so like to call us to order and turn the meeting over to staff.
Good morning. Hope everybody's doing okay this morning. We have done some work since the last meeting, making an effort to incorporate the changes that was suggested at the last meeting. The, there's, the two biggest changes is, is that we worked towards adding the other firefighter position. And that we, the, once we had those positions funded and the police funded, we looked at the other administrative. So, so the way staff had kind of looked at that and proposed those things to me was kind of like a priority list. And as, as the things on their list were being checked off, they would bring another one up, right? So the next biggest priority when we, once we had the other firefighter position accounted for, the, the 911 position, there was, there was a desire to add a 911 telecommunicator. The funding for that is really two part-time positions. And also the reduction in some overtime from having a full-time staff member versus part-timers and, and being able to rely on that, that body for that position. So we did, we were able to pay for that by just simply eliminating the part-time cost essentially for 911. So we, we are able to do that now. And so that is, that is also an addition. So as we get into the numbers now, so this budget in front of you is reflective of the things that you all talked about at the last meeting. We're going to go through and, and try to summarize that here in a second. But I just want to communicate that the things you all said have all been incorporated with the exception, or with the addition of the conversion of telecommunicator part-time into one full-time position. We did not talk about that at the last meeting. And I want to make sure that Chief Gray and Chief Dunn, we appreciate them bringing that up and, and working through that. And, okay, so let me have, I can't reach for that.
Okay, so you said the one part-time is going to full-time or two part-time?
One part-time, but there, there was forty-some thousand dollars out of a sixty-five thousand.
One part-time is going to full-time?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you're taking all of the part-time money and converting it into, there was enough part-time money to have two part-time employees. But we're converting that to one full-time position, even though we just had actually on the books, one part-time telecommunicator.
Just wanted to thank you all for what you've done and what you're doing. Taking our ideas into account and presenting us with a, with a great diverse budget. And this has been one of the easiest budget processes I can remember, even though it's been one of the toughest financial years, I guess. But I just appreciate all your work and I think it's, it's a good way for Lee to end her career here, so. Thank you.
I give, I give Lee a lot of credit. And, and she's, she's really helped this year, particularly since I was out part of the spring. She, she's done, she's done some heavy lifting this spring and we really appreciate Lee a lot. And her detail and, and, and Melanie's done a good job taking, and, and I, I told Melanie this in the email last night, I'll, I'll say it publicly. Lee and I look at how we would present the numbers very similar. She'll do it more with slides. I, I just print the spreadsheets and talk from the spreadsheets. But Melanie has done a terrific job in taking that, converting that into something a little bit different format that somebody from the outside might want to see and might communicate to them a little bit better. So I, I appreciate that of her. And so it truly is a contribution amongst everybody. The staff, the department heads have all done a great job. And so there you go.
Well, before we go on, Commissioner Cottle made a very sincere statement to start us off with this morning. And I just want to make sure that IT is in there, that they recorded that and that we can, can we get a clip of that to share with the five commissioners? Because you know, that doesn't happen too often, but to start us off with a very sincere statement from Commissioner Cottle was a good way to start us off. And I was so impressed, I'm about ready to make a motion to adjourn. He won't let me do that though, so you guys continue.
All right, so here, we'll get into review. These are the strategic areas that we've tried to address during the development of the budget. We've had a couple of those, those times where we've talked about that, these categories. These are the things that you all identified in your work plan, the strategic work plan by KLC that we did last year. And then the things that were the budget priorities from the budget survey are down on the bottom left. And so we just want to put that back up there and make sure that y'all know and hear again that these are the things staff are trying to accomplish based on your all's feedback, okay? Revenue, leaving the, the tax rates, you know, not making any changes, doing, doing everything the way we've talked about up to this point. This is, this is the revenue that's included in our projections in the budget. Essentially for the FY '25 on the property tax is 2.405 million in revenue. You're, you're taking, you're reducing the rate to the, to the 4% number, which is not as low as it could go. It could go just a, just a tad lower than that, but certainly with the market today, with inflation prices, this is probably one of those that, that you need to not go as low as that. But you are reducing the rate to the 4% number. Without just repeating the information on the slide, do y'all have any questions on property taxes that we could address? Are, are, the property taxes is a good baseline and a good foundation to your, to your revenues, to your budget? That's the beginning of our, our revenue. The next pocket is your occupational taxes and license. And as you can see, there's a lot more categories, which creates a lot larger total. It becomes seventeen million, eight oh five, broken up into these subordinate categories. The occupational taxes, occupational license is the largest. It is ten million, six hundred and fifty thousand estimated. We, we do still feel like that's a, a bit of a conservative number, but just recall, we removed how conservative we're projecting that. We're, we're probably aligning it more with the end of fiscal year. And we're still under that, but we, we are still trying to be conservative with that number. Of course, insurance premiums, we, we, there was no change to those rates after we had the, the healthy conversation last year. We will come back to the, to all the rates again, like we did this past year. We'll, we will analyze those again, look at the performance of each one. We will, we will bring all those up for discussion in the late fall, like we did this year, probably towards November and December, like we did. Partly because if you're changing some of the rates, you'll need to start thinking about when you're changing those. And so you don't want to get into the budget process because then it's too late to affect the budget year that you're going into. And so we'll look at the overall performance of the revenue across the city. We will look as we get into that second quarter, towards the end of that second quarter. And then we will have a follow-up discussion on all the tax rates and see if we can't come up with changes that could affect economic development, that could affect something positive or better align revenue with cost or whatever that is. If there's something that we can easily identify, staff will do that. And then we, we will have a healthy discussion. Again, for me, I'll talk about it, we'll talk about anything. And, and even, even, not everybody understands that, like you have to talk about it. And, and even if you don't do anything, it is healthy to talk about it. If, if nothing else, it raises awareness for how we operate. So we'll come back to the tax rates across the board.
We included in your packet just that refresher memo, just as a refresher and a recommendation from us that we will go forward in the fall.
And, and you updated that, right?
Yeah, I updated that, yeah.
Yeah, and so that was, that was the updated version of the memo we did last, last winter tied to, or last February tied to all the rates. So she's updated that, that's in your packet, so you can take that with you. And, and as we get into the later in the year, this, this memo is kind of what we're talking about when we're talking about our, our tax rates in, in Dable County. The next category is, is various additional revenues. So like you, you have your intergovernmental revenue in this category, your transfer from the utility to the general fund to cover expenses, et cetera. Three and a half percent of revenue there. Penalties, other service revenue, totals another two million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand in total, total revenue. Do you all have any questions on this category? As you've looked through the budget process? So this is the summary. So the total revenue that we.
Earl, on the penalties or the one that we just went?
Yeah.
Like this, I know we had asked and that may not be in that, this part, but like business license, I know that's a different one. Just to look at all of our fees and our, because they've not been looked at.
So we've not updated the estimate on it, just because it's really hard to update the estimate when we don't have a good idea of a, like how many true new businesses will have coming in and things like that. So we do have plans once, presumably if you all pass the budget as we've presented it today. There's funds in there for business license software, which will help us identify and better track those, those items. And then there, we didn't include it in the budget process just because I feel like it's a different conversation, some ideas on how we could change our ordinance and improve that, because it's a, it's an ordinance change.
So the bottom line is it's hard to do that during the budget process at this point.
Right, well, I'm just saying, all of our, we had mentioned that earlier, like all of our fees and, you know, just the things that haven't been looked at in fifteen years. The fire service agreement out at American Greedings, you know, our agreements with, that we're getting money for, but we've not looked at.
So I just, I haven't, we don't look at the fire service agreement, I would say that one, each, the actual agreement. We do increase their, their rate by COLA each year.
Okay.
So that one is adjusted, at least for inflation.
And it has always done that. It's, it goes up by the COLA, the same cost as, it's literally converted almost the same way the water rates are.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, we, you know, we're looking for money always, but it's just the, the things that we already have in place, like a twenty-five dollar business license that's been there for forty years. And one person might have a business forty years ago and they paid twenty-five dollars, you know? Could you prorate it to larger businesses or, you know, you've got your big drapes and you've got.
Well, when we were talking, you know, and JJ's in the back of the room, there, there is, there is an advantage to having that real time, that information is real time. So one of the things we've talked about is being in touch with our businesses. And so it's very difficult to be that way when you don't know who they are necessarily. So, so part of the whole conversion to the new software is, is being able to know, know our businesses and have a relationship with our businesses to, by requiring them to come in, even if it's a reduced fee. Making that an annual, annual interaction helps us support them over time. So yeah, we, we anticipate that conversation continuing. We are going to look at our fees, everything this year, we're going to continue to do that through the fall. When I say the fall, like August, July, we're, we're going to get through the budget process for us. That's how we're looking at it and then rolling into those other conversations as we get the business license software. We'll continue to have those kinds, and so that will be back in front of you. And, but it will not be, for the budget process, this then represents a conservative number on, on revenue. If you, if you do a better job of penalties and collecting penalties, that revenue will, will trend up. So we, we didn't feel like that in the budget process that would hurt us per se. And that if that number was higher, then we would be conservative. And so we, we didn't try to speculate on what that number, how that number could change. It's nine thousand now, I mean, it could.
I'm just saying for, you know, across the city, you know, if we can just look at that, you know, more in-depth. I know there's a lot of ordinances that have to go along with different things that have to be changed, you know, that haven't been changed in years. So that's just a thought.
No, I, it's a good thought, for sure. So here's all the revenue, all categories for the general fund. It totals twenty-two million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars with no debt, no bonds, no, no additional monies coming in from outside sources. The fund balance, carryforward is seven, one, three, five, for a total set resources of twenty-nine, five, one, eight. So comparing that over the last few years, that's, that's a fairly stable and flat projection. When you go back to, to twenty-one, for example, you were at twenty-one, six, six, nine. Twenty-two, you were at twenty-two, four, nine, three. So it's really, after it all boils out, you know, you're really, not necessarily flat, but you are trending up. But it's, it's, it's the slow trend that you would, you would expect that from stability, right? It's a very stable, stable tax base, the way I look at the chart.
Earl, on the, just for the sake of, well, me and everybody else that might read the budget, the fund balance, carryforward, you know, it's, what, fifteen million dollars less than it was a year ago or whatever? Can you just explain that so people?
Jenny Rogers Construction, we, we pulled it down for Jenny Rogers, the streetscape, the parks, Michael Smith Park. Those things were funded from your reserve. That, that was really, you know, created for several reasons over the course of time. Being very conservative for several years produced that. And, and, and we, knowing that you were going to spend money on the streetscape, knowing you were going to spend money on parks, you took steps to try to not borrow money for those projects. And we were successful in, in completing those projects without any additional loan funds to support those projects.
And part of that, because your fund balance, like when you look at this chart back in twenty, twenty-three and twenty-two, it's twenty-eight, thirty million. That did include your fire station debt.
Correct.
So the funds to build the fire station is included in that as well, so.
Thank you. He's on the roll this morning. Yeah. And my weenies. Got your weenies already?
Expenditures, on the expenditure side, the, this is a nice summary for the projected expense in each department and what is in each department for you, just to reiterate it. So for example, the legislative executive includes human resources, the city commission's operator, operating expenses, the engineering department, and, and the total for that, those operate, operations is one point, six, six, nine, all the way over to communication services, which is one point, four, six, two, which is your 911 center. And so I, I like the way she did this. It's, it's a nice concise summary that's just better than throwing a table up with numbers. So I appreciated this slide a lot.
That was all Melanie, she's fantastic.
And so on there, you have, the, the way it, it rolls through your spreadsheets is legislative, executive, finance, police department. Then, then it gets into your other three departments on the screen, but also your fire department is on this slide as well as your public works, your public services. Your public services includes, for example, the street sweeping to the cemetery sales, stormwater management, all of your facilities management, and of course, your streets and roads.
Oh, and I want to call, call to our attention the, the line that says personnel for each one of those sections. That's, wow, that's amazing.
Yeah, and so you'll notice that the city really operates in the sphere of personnel expenses. Look at the operating expenses of the police department compared to the personnel cost items. Which, which your, your departments really operate on a very shoestring-y budget. Like I, I'm a hundred percent convinced they could do more with additional resources above the personnel expenses. But the most important priority in anything is the people in, in that situation regardless. So there's definitely a balancing act there. And so we commend all the department heads on, on basically operating and managing that money. So when it, when you think all of the department heads manage their money, they're not, the, the, the police chief and, and Dunn are, are dealing with that five hundred thousand dollar number to try to drive their department below, under budget. If they're doing that, if they're able to do that, it's managing the overtime, it's managing those, that five hundred thousand dollars in operating expenses. And, and which includes everything from paper clips to gas and oil for their cruisers, right? Ammunition, firing range, firing range, they have to practice. You know, there's expenses out there, there's light, electric bills out there, there's things like that that are embedded in that five hundred thousand dollars. And it is, it is an extremely tight budget. We, we don't have, we definitely, as a community, invest in our people. Same thing is true for the fire. Same thing is true for the fire department. The, you know, I'm, I'm sure the fire department could do additional trainings, additional, all kinds of things, you know, I could, I could think of two or three things that I've observed when we were looking at the possible design of the fire station that, that they don't do, not necessarily, not that it's bad, but it's just opportunities that you could do better maybe. But, so that's always an important emphasis for us and, and we appreciate what the department heads do to manage and mitigate their expense changes over time. Public Works is probably the biggest variance, but they deal with physical things. Their, their, their cost truly is in construction material, concrete. You know, we, we see us, you know, we talked about for a couple of years, getting to, to the sidewalk improvements coming into them, our main corridors coming into town, we've done Lexington Avenue, we've done some others. Now you see them on, I mean, Maple Avenue, you see them on Lexington Avenue now, that's Public Works, that's, that is a couple hundred thousand dollar sidewalk project if we were to bid that out. We, we give credit to Rick and Josh and, and those guys down there in Public Works that the staff is, and, and the staff themselves, they've developed their skillsets over time to where we, we are highly functional doing things like that sidewalk project that is a betterment to the community and, and, and that has been a corridor that we've had requests in for years. And so I appreciate them able to get to it this spring and, and, and I know that they'll go on to another area after they finish that one, as we've, we've talked about doing before. I know Baughman Avenue is on their list. And we, you know, we finally have significant momentum in that, that pedestrian area. And so we appreciate their effort and focus on that, but.
Their, their budget also includes the city hall and non cemetery mowing contract, which inflates that variance of personnel to operations that you don't see in some of the other budgets. And streetlights are very expensive.
So really, I mean, you know, and I'm, I'm talking without anything prepared, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, make sure you all don't have any questions and I'm, so, so feel free to interrupt if you, if you want. And I'm trying to like drag through it a little bit so you have a chance to look at the spreadsheets while we go and look at the information while we go. Because the next slide is, the next couple of slides are, are community agencies, we've talked about those in the past. You all have, have mitigated those. I would like to point out, and I didn't tell Lee, we do have, so the development corporations, $100,000, we do have the additional money set aside in the budget for that, I think it's like 75,000.
Yes.
So their request was 250, we have 175 in the budget for, for the economic development corporation, we have 100. The way we, we were breaking it out, there's program expenses for them, which is kind of how we were trying to figure out how to do that. And, and so we, there's, the programs they come up with will be out of the 75,000, 100,000 is their base transfer for operations. And then, then that way, if we have additional programs in the future, we know where we're going to put that money, we have a way to track that, which it is, I don't have the sheet number.
It is on page nine, if you scroll down to line 1019, 107920 and 7921, it's about halfway down the page. We've got 100 for the economic development corporations operations and then an additional 75 for economic development initiatives. And the, the slide, which we didn't, we didn't coordinate on this, myself and Melanie, this is more of a operational slide because you also don't have the $50,000 for the seniors' capital improvement to their facility.
And what was that number?
For the seniors?
Yes, ma'am.
50,000. So they get 73,000 in operations and 50 for a one-time capital improvement dependent upon them, you know, progressing with their plan.
Thank you for separating that, because I wanted to see that. And then on the previous page, what was in red where it had 6,282?
Difference between your, where we are projecting our fund balance to live and the target, which.
Is essentially zero.
Yeah, 6, 6, 6,000 out of 23 million in expenditures is, is immaterial. That is the difference in very, very, in minimal amounts, but we did want that just so that it's there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I read it as 6,282. I thought, oh, she just left off the dollars.
No, it's six, it is 6,000. So that is in the accounting world considered immaterial.
Right, it is. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yes, 6,000.
I'll scoot it over.
The la, the la, the last meeting we had, we talked about dropping and funding the capital down to where our reserve was our, our fund balance target. And, and so what she's demonstrating there is that, that's what, where we've ended up. We can back into that number being exactly zero by just altering, you know, one of the commitments to a projected capital purchase or something, but we didn't, we kept it with their estimates, knowing that those can go up or down either way and we're going to have to manage those along the way, that's just part of budget management. So, but we're projecting basically bringing the reserve down to the fund balance target of 25% and through the course of the year and operating at, at a, at a balanced budget and including personnel changes, which I'll let Randy talk about those. So the, then the community agencies are funded according to the charts. Melanie did do a good job talking about shared agencies versus community and economic development opportunities versus housing and food insecurity and then community health and wellness. So we broke those out still in those categories and, and you all can digest those as you see fit. And, and that way, you know, when you, you can address and communicate really where you're putting some money over time. There's an argument to, to be made with the shared agencies like the senior citizen center where they feed so many people now, there's, there's, I'm, I'm, the, one of the things in, in the homeless discussion is that housing insecurity of underfunded retirees. And, and so the senior citizen center does do a good job providing both relationships, a healthy environment for seniors, but also food for seniors that perhaps maybe would struggle to eat somewhere else a healthy meal. So we know the meal that they get out there. So you're, you're, some of that money really is for homelessness and food insecurity also. So then the general fund summary, and I, I think Melanie did a great job with this.
Earl, before we move on, I know the, the police department has asked, or I guess is ready to do some improvements on Gun Range Road. We just didn't have room for that or?
No, it's in there. It's in the capital side, yeah, that's funded with your, your reserve, it's one of the projects pulling down your reserve.
Okay.
Yeah.
But didn't the number go down?
We, we adjusted it based on a follow-up conversation we had with Chief Gray. He, we, we were talking about wanting to do that with Public Works, the original estimate was basically contracting it out. We just feel like that's a hard thing to contract the way, the way it is out there with, with intermittent concrete already there and, and things. So we want to do that with Public Works staff as time, time passes and by doing that, we get it done a little bit cheaper, but we do do it ourselves. So that, that number changed based on our conversation with Chief Gray.
Well, then probably, probably doing it in-house, you can get a better result because you make more modifications as you go along too.
You, you, the, the concern that I would have is, is that like if you're going to contract it out, you're going to have a lot of customization that you want to do.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not just, okay, we want to pour a 50 by 80 concrete slab, that's not really what you're doing, you're doing a lot of infill concrete. And by doing it with Public Works, we're just, the money's just buying concrete basically and we're, we're laying that, we're placing it where we want. And, and if we need to move a form, we just move a form. We don't, we don't have to navigate that with a contractor who says, well, I didn't estimate that, so now I got to have more money. And it just provides an opportunity to customize it, which is kind of probably what that facility needs, in my opinion. It, it, they need to be able to move a form around and, and really get situated for equipment that they're trying to buy. You know, they're, they're talking about these motion, you know, these things and we don't have a spec for that, they may change their mind, may buy this model versus this model. So we don't want to, we're, we're not trying to build that in and predict that for a contractor. By doing it ourselves, we'll just be able to manipulate what we do and move right on.
Josh likes that ability, right?
But again, I, I were, I mean, hopefully we're, the equipment is in the budget that, for that moving equipment.
The number, the number that Chief wanted is in the budget.
Is in there, okay. So that, I mean, I know Public Works does a great job and we just keep saying, oh, let Public Works do it, let Public, and they do a great job. I mean, next door is proof of that. It's just how much can they do? And so you don't want Gun Range to be pushed off two years if they need that, you know, if we're buying the equipment, we don't want it to be at the bottom of the.
We anticipate.
How you manage that.
Yeah, we're anticipating getting into it this fiscal year. Yeah. It, it, you know, you're, they're working a list, you know, for sure, and, and they've got a, they've got a long list, but you know, what it equates into probably if, if they're working full-time a week, you know, out there and they're done and updated it. So, so they'll, they'll program and so the way they'll end up doing it is they'll, they'll piecemeal it, so they may take a month, you know? But, but ultimately it's maybe 40 hours worth of actual crew time out there on site and then some cleanup time. And, and so they'll sort through it, the good thing is when you do it in-house, it, it, it takes all the timing pressure off of it, the police department can do their thing and when they, they, they and Josh have a chance to go out there, they can organize it and so it, it's, it's accommodating and, but we'll get it done this fiscal year.
Kevin, I guess that gets you off the hook, right?
Okay.
Everybody ordered to move in targets. Gets you off the hook, right?
Right.
Let them warm up a little bit.
That's fair.
And I think part of what we've been able to learn during this process is that when the city departments work together, they're in a result of, the product is better, but we also are saving money for our citizens, so that's really great. We want you guys to have what you need, but want to make sure we do it as a cost effective as we can. Good questions.
A couple pages back, I'm slow.
No, no, go ahead.
I'm like, oh, no, I appreciate my colleagues' compromise on the economic development going up to the 175. And I just want to, you know, say that, to me, that's the, the biggest thing to fund always, because that's the area where we get a return on our investment and keep our income flowing. So I look forward to increasing that more over the years and as we see projects come to us, because that multiplies 24, you know? So that's all I want to say.
Can we talk about, I lost my place.
Talk about anything you want to talk about, you got 15 minutes left. Just joking.
Don't make it up.
Just joking.
I'm old enough, I forgot what I was going to say. Go ahead, come back to me.
I'll ask about code enforcement while he's talking, because I know on there it's 1%.
Yeah.
And I know the budget was a lot bigger in 2023, you know, for salaries, because we only have one person.
That also at the time included your ABC administrator.
Right.
The ABC, yeah, and the ABC administrator's salary's been absorbed into the police department already.
Has already been absorbed, okay.
Right.
Because again, I, I mean, and I know we can't have everything, it's just, that's a, that's a big thing in the community, our code enforcement, and it seems like we're going the opposite direction because, and there's more to take care of.
Let, let me say this on the code enforcement, I'll, I'll give rest, rest in peace, Tom Broach, a lot of credit. Tom, Tom developed a relationship with landlords, with residents that struggled with maintenance and was able to make phone calls and get things done sometimes. Tom had been here forever though. And, and I'm not saying he's perfect, I mean, Lord, nobody is, but it, it, we, we have to mature our code enforcement into the size city we are, we have to figure out a way to make it not dependent on a person. But the staff we have, we, you know, we need to help them get organized and be able to do things efficiently in order to keep up with things. So with, like when grass hits, for example, it hits everywhere. It's not just an area of town. So how do we spread our resources out to be able to capture everything? And, and with the turnover in code enforcement that we've had, we, we have to, and the police department and Josh, you know, we've kind of split that between them two in, in order to, to observe that as engineer, engineering, I worked with Tom a lot and I helped Tom in a lot of ways that not everybody realized that engineering was involved, as involved with code enforcement as they did, that the buildings he would tear down was engineering. I mean, like we worked with Tom on all those things. And so we've got to, we've got to change into the next generation of code enforcement, we got to do a better job, I know, we, we know that. And your desire to emphasize code enforcement is not lost on us and we'll communicate that with staff and we'll urge staff to be, to, to recognize that that is a point of emphasis that they have to do, they have to figure out a way to do things more efficiently. So we'll communicate that down to staff and, and, and hear that from you.
Well, because I think everybody wants Danville to stay, look nice, and I mean, like yesterday at a class, first thing you get is a text from somebody saying about grass and weeds. So, I mean, you know, we just, you know.
I'll say this real quick for this community and, and you know, and I, I have to look at it mechanically and, and so I, I went to the pizza pub last night because my son, there was somebody playing guitar up there. So I go up there and I'm sitting there and, and me being, this is a total sidebar. And, and so I'm sitting there and I'm in, you know, and it's a terrific, terrific environment. You can't, you, you know, it just is. But, but like you, you're sitting there and you're looking at it and you know that there's a lot of people ask different questions. And so there was, there's somebody that is a county judge in a different part of the state that we, we have worked with over time. He's passing through town, he, he is heavily in economic development in their county, they've been highly successful, I'm going to leave him anonymous if I may, and, and, but, but we have had an entourage from here meet with him, with our economic development folks, we've met with them in their community. And so he, he's, he is in Lexington yesterday, comes through Danville, parks his car, walks around downtown, drives our bypass and really gets into, in the way that I would when I go somewhere, he, he analyzed Danville for the first time in like 10 years. So I get a call and, and they say, what in the world do you all have to argue about? You all are the best community in the state, you all have the prettiest downtown, you all have the most vibrant bypass, you, you have people everywhere downtown, why do you all, do you all, do you all argue with each other? Like what possibly would you all have to argue for? Like why would you all argue? And I, I don't know, we, we, sometimes we, we can chew on our own a little bit and I, and I don't know that we always, we hold ourselves to a standard that we don't necessarily reflect on sometimes, I think, effectively. And, and, and I just think we do, we do a pretty good job, but we can do better and, and we.
I'm not, I'm not saying somebody's not doing a good job, I'm just.
No, I know that.
In the bigger picture, there's a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
You know, abandoned houses and.
I wasn't.
Grass and all that.
I wasn't saying that to, to conflict with what you were saying, just to, I, I wanted to share that with you more than anything, just because we did receive that feedback yesterday.
Yeah.
But we hear you and we'll, we'll continue to refine code enforcement.
Remembered what I was gonna ask you.
Go ahead.
You know, when I first did this, they're on stone tablets, so it's been a while. Give me slack. But I was just gonna have you, if you would, kind of go over the conversation we had about pickleball because there's many people who contact me about pickleball. And I know that essentially we're waiting on the meeting we have with the county. That's correct.
Yeah, Josh is working with a couple of different concepts with Tommy and, and the consultant. And we're, we will talk about which projects you want to fund out of the Parks and Rec at a joint meeting pretty soon. We gotta get that scheduled. We know that. And we're, I mean, honestly, we're trying to get through the budget process. It, it is easier for the city to add those projects mid-year because you, it's, it's efficient for you to amend the budget and, and to start that process off after you make that decision. So we're anticipating that. We're anticipating dealing with Parks and Recreation when you get a concluded decision on what you want to accomplish. We think that we're, we're narrowing in. We know that the Bunny Davis Center, you know, that that is now a viable project for pool update there. We know that Jenny Rogers is a future pool. We know, you, you know what I mean? As we've gone through the process, those, those projects have gotten a little bit more clarity. And, and so we, we anticipate that being part of a presentation soon. He's got the capital list that you have that she gave you, has all the projects identified on it, should.
It does not have pickleball on this list because we had originally scheduled pickleball for fiscal year 26. However, based on the feedback Josh has been getting, there are plans to move that forward. I, I don't have it updated on this particular sheet though.
26 is a good target date though. Gotta be realistic about some of this stuff.
I will say this, there is a lot of pickleball being built right now in, everywhere. And I know there's, there's a project in Versailles at Fallen Springs to build pickleball complex there. And there's a, you know, Lexington's building a big indoor, if you drive around New Circle Road, you can see it on that exterior towards the west side of town. So there, there's pickleball courts being built everywhere that don't, didn't exist last year. So that will be brought online. So, you know, just as a matter of reference to, we have to consider that as we go forward.
I appreciate Commissioner Peak bringing up the codes. And we've talked about this, you know, the big picture is great, but people notice when they hit a pothole or there's a dilapidated house with grass. You know, it's that little like icing on the cake that makes the big difference. So it's about customer service, you know. So thank you for, keep work, you know, keeping and working on that.
Other questions, comments?
So the other funds, we have the general fund, municipal aid, Parks and Rec, utility, cemetery, stormwater, garbage, parking. Those are all in your, your sheet and this is the, ultimately what the budget ordinance will be built off of.
Well, I just wanna, A, I wanna mention in the last two meetings, we have included your opioid fund. So that is your opioid settlement funds. We don't have any current plans for expenditures because they are restricted in a lot of ways. They are very specific. So I think it would be beneficial at some point in the upcoming year to have a workshop where you guys kind of let us know how you would like to spend those. And so there are no budgeted expenditures for those funds in this budget. And I think that's until you all decide how exactly you would like to spend them. We are projected to get them for the next 10, 15 years. So they trickle in. We are supposed to be getting about 15,000 this upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year 24. And to date, they, they gave us a lump sum for the first several years of the settlement. So by the end of, or early fall, we should have about $120,000 in opioid funds. So I think you can expect about 12 to 20,000 annually for the next several years. So there's not an obligation to spend them by a certain date. The obligation is really on exactly what you spend it on, which has to be real, it has to be primarily opioid abatement and opioid issues. So you can't, you can't address, for instance, homelessness. While homelessness, you know, folks that are experiencing homelessness frequently do have issues with drugs and alcohol. Some don't, right? But you can't use this fund, these funds for that sort of thing. So they're very specific. Other than that, your other budgeted funds, most of them are fairly similar. Park and Rec obviously is significantly lower than the last two years because we have not had that joint meeting and added the capital in. So currently Park and Rec is strictly operations for your Park and Rec system. Stormwater includes a tentative debt issuance for a large project that Josh is working through and which will also go hand in hand with a rate adjustment at some point to account for that debt service since it's a, it's similar to a utility fund in its operation. I'm trying to think if there are any highlights to any of the others. Utility funds, obviously our second largest fund. Marshall has quite a bit going on for his, his capital, but it's all associated with either some grants he's got and some debt. Most of it through Kentucky Infrastructure Authority, which provides us better rates than we otherwise would get.
The biggest project you'll see out of the utility that's in Danville will be the sewer line, the Clark's Run Sewer Line project. That ultimately will, will cross over 4th Street near, near the, the creek down here. Then go through west of the lagoon, or east of the lagoon at the end of Terrell Drive. That serves the Clark's Run watershed west of the lagoon. Of course, you, you know, he's got the, the lead and copper, the PFOS, those things that are more regulatory in nature, but they are, they do, are capital projects, but those are all funded so far with some, some offset of grant money, grant revenue. You, he's getting into the ARPA projects right now. You should have on the agenda Monday the award of, for, for the engineering services for the, for the ARPA projects that are not inside of the city limits. Spears Creek is the biggest one in the city. You'll have Junction City, the Noblick watershed, the York Lane Pump Station, those projects in Perrville, the wastewater plant that we will, we will work on and then the, some collection improvements in Perrville. That, that work will, the engineering services for those sewer improvements will be on the agenda probably Monday. The waterline project, I don't think that, so you've got now a new, now Perrville, the west end of the county has redundant water supply. They have more water than they've ever had in 50 years. You have elevated the tank. They, they had an insufficient and poorly operating standpipe when Danville acquired it. You've replaced pretty much all of the backbone of the infrastructure for the western end of the county, including Perrville, specifically with the water tower and the 12-inch water line. You did that with, by, and, and you're able to add Springfield as a customer, which offsets that expense for the city of Perrville. Otherwise, the city of Perrville would have borne those expenses. And so we, we, that, that's been a tremendous windfall for the western end of the county in Perrville specifically. And that's wrapping up. You won't, you'll see some work tied to Parksville, maybe on that end of the system where we may have a couple of connections points for this, for Parksville Water District so that they'll have different opportunities to get water. They've always had one supply of water, one connection point out Lebanon Road. If something went wrong with that pump station, Parksville had issues with water supply. So now moving forward, they will be able to connect in, in the western end of the county in different places and have two supplies or three possibly. So it, that, that project shores up all the water west of, of town, basically. You, of course, you've already completed the 16-inch water line out to Hughes Lane, connecting that to Corporate Drive. So you've, you've moved your loop further west all the way to Hughes Lane Corporate Drive and really shored up water supply in that end of the county. Water supply and water pressure. The tank is much higher than what we had out, out of the standpipe. So the total of all funds will be, in the budget ordinance will be 52,695. It accomplishes everything we've talked about through the budget process. You get, you're getting your fire department, police department fully staffed, fully funded over the course of the years. We can hire people. You're, you're adding, converting part-time employees to, to a full-time position in telecommunications. You're adding a firefighter and funding your, your capital, your funding. And, and right now, we're, we're, other than in the utility for the rate-funded projects, or, yeah, revenue-funded projects, you, you don't have any new debt. Do you all have any questions on, on this, the, the budget ordinance? The first reading will be built on this sheet.
This is just a general question. How do y'all feel about, you know, we use reserves, cash on hand to pay for several projects? Is that preferable than bonding? I've heard both arguments.
It's, it's.
And I didn't know what your philosophy generally was.
Yeah, it's a definite hit and miss. If, it depends on the project, really. I mean, it depends on how it depreciates or, or what, you know, the streetscape, I kind of like the idea of not doing, you know, just as a, you know, what my view is, right? I like the idea of the streetscape not being debt serviced. Parks is, is, there's a lot of times revenue associated with a lot of the facilities. So like we're, we're talking about with pickleball, if you did an indoor building of some kind, you're gonna have to charge at the door, which is very normal, right? So there's, there's all these revenue things that, that are, interact with a lot of the projects you would do, the pool, for example. And so those make sense to be debt serviced, honestly. Some of them do. Some of them, you know, if you have a pool and you're committed to aquatics, your pool is gonna have a life expectancy. So aligning that debt with the life expectancy enables you to replace the pool because you've built in debt service, right? So then you've built in your depreciation expense to replace it. So there's all kinds of arguments you can make, pro and con with that. And, and, but I do think that we've done a fairly balanced job. We're, we're not necessarily debt heavy at all. You're not, not necessarily near your max at all. And so we, you know, I, I would feel good about it.
I'm glad you said that because there is, you know, people think what they think, whether they have any knowledge about it or not. But there is a thought out there that we are, you know, loaned up and that's just not the case.
No.
Loaned up. I mean, we can't, we can't.
No, 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 no. You're nowhere, no, you're not loaned up at all. Now you're bonding, and, and we will have the, the RJ Palmer, his, his, what's the name of their company?
Municipal, Compass Municipal.
Compass will do, they'll provide the, the summary of our debt profile now. We should have that in a few weeks. And, and that'd be, we will ask him to come to a commission meeting and, and demonstrate our financial position as it relates to debt. We do that, you know, we, we try to do that at some point during the spring, summer and, and let annually, I like to do that annually. We, there was years we didn't do it, but if you recall, we've tried to do it annually at least at some point. And just to review the debt, review the debt profile. Some of the debt too, you know, over the years, you've moved that around and you've, you've analyzed your debt payment to try to level that, you know, and, and so there's, he, he's done a good job of, of, of managing that annual expense so that it is flat. Really, it starts to be more, more level with your, against your operating expenses, you know. So he's done a good job with that. And as the market interest rate has changed for debt, so we've refinanced things and we've done that over time for the last, you know, seven, eight, 10 years.
Are the bonds you, the commission made eight, 10 years ago, are they locked in at those low interest rates?
So it depends on, most of them are locked in at anywhere between 2 to, they're all locked in at a rate. Some of them are lower than others. None of our rates are, are variable on our debt. Some of them are depending on the fund and what the debt was for, like our utility rates are usually somewhere between 1.5 and 2.7. Some of our general fund and other fund debt goes a little bit higher up in, you know, right now, most of them are under, I'd say four and a half percent. I'd have to look exactly at the debt schedules. We have a couple that get up into 5% up in the next 10 to 15 years because they've progressed when they created the debt. They essentially backloaded it. That was better at that time financially. And those are ones that we look at, is it best to, is, does it benefit us to refinance that debt essentially at a, at a rate it is today? Currently, probably not based on what our rates, the, the public, what current interest rates are. But two or three years from now, five years from now, it might, may be beneficial for a debt that has 15 years left to, to refinance essentially. But currently they're all locked in at a rate.
Well, that's very good news. Okay. Cause I know, we didn't work through any loans when I started, but when I looked at the list, a lot of them were, you know, five, 10 years ago. There were quite a few. And I think maybe that's why public perception was that, it seemed like there was a few boom, boom, booms.
There, and there was, there was a period, I think it was probably somewhere between 2015 and 2018 where they did refinance a lot of them. So they are all kind of, they were, had been originally issued at certain different points in time, but they refinanced them in that period because there was a, a financial benefit to do so.
Okay, so it looked like all these were taken out during that time. But okay. Thank you for explaining that.
We did add, we did add debt during that period too. We added debt to support the sewer infrastructure, the wastewater plant, for example. We did add debt for the fire station, right? But part of what he will do is he will look at all those and look for opportunities to reorganize that debt or refinance that debt to see if it's cost effective. There's an expense every time you refinance. So we, that is one of, that's what he's, that is, that is his job. And we, we will have him come and do a presentation on that for you soon. Your bonding capacity is something like the last, what, what is the total bonding capacity compared? You don't have to, you don't have to, don't try to remember it. I just thought you may have looked at it recently.
I don't want to say and be very wrong.
Yeah.
If I was close, I would, I would take a guess, but I would be, I don't have a good close guess.
No, I don't want to do that either. That's, so we'll, we'll, we'll have RJ at a meeting soon, relatively soon.
I just had a question. And maybe I just missed it. On the opioid, opioid fund, you're not putting, putting any money in there.
So this is your budgeted expenditures. This is your budgeted appropriation. We have not, yes, we haven't budgeted any expenditures. We did, I did go ahead and put into the budget what the projected revenue is that we're supposed to get in the next couple of months. But we didn't put any expenses in. So when and if you all decide to spend that in the upcoming year, we will do a budget amendment to account for that.
Yeah.
And, okay.
Any other questions? I wanted to warn the commission that in conversation with Randy Boyd this morning, he informed me he had about a three-hour presentation. So we need to, we need to get to Mr. Boyd as soon as we can. Okay, we don't, any other questions about the grab?
Okay, any other questions about the draft budget, though? Give you all opportunity to get them all left here now.
And Randy's compensation, we've already talked about that once, so this is reiterating that, the COLA plus experience-based pay, what that looks like. So he's going to reiterate the personnel expenses that we, and changes made in this budget.
He only needs five minutes then, right? All right, Commissioner Pique has another question.
On the capital, we talked about the police department, the gun range. Fire, it says minor renovations went down from 50 to 40. Is that good? I mean, you all figured all that out, obviously, I guess. But the dump truck, the amount went down a lot on that. I mean, how did?
So that partially is to account, we, when we were doing our, our estimate, estimations last time, there was, there was an error on my math, right? So to account for that, we talked to Josh about potentially finding a used dump truck. And instead of holding it for 20 to 25 years, you get a new, a newer one in 10 to 15. So we did adjust the balance on that because we had a math error and we had more, you pulled your fund balance down below your target by about 120,000. So we adjusted, that was, that was one, we've had success in the utility fund recently with purchasing a used dump truck. So we thought that was one that we could accomplish and still provide what they need for operations and account financially.
Yeah, on the utility side, they saved, they went from a full price to down to, I think they got a unit for $40,000. And so there's, there's a case to be made to looking at that. But we, so, I don't know.
It was hard work, it took them a while to find it. So I won't, I won't discount that. They did a lot of legwork to do that, but they were able to find a used one in good shape that will last.
The 10-year window that you're looking at.
I was just saying, it's like 120,000 dollars.
It is, it's a big difference.
And we put a lot more work on them, so we're like, okay, well, just making sure.
I'm surprised they don't have those in that, in Carvana, you know, the big vending machine, dump truck. He said push a button. Okay, any, any last questions on the budget? All right, Mr. Boyd, you're up, I think.
All right. You're going to put me on a timer, I'll try.
No, sir, you're good, five minutes.
All right, just a couple of things. I've got in your packet here, this is just a refresher on some of the, as Earl mentioned, too, our compensation plan. I've got a memo in here outlining the strategy, the comp plan itself, and the authorized positions. But before we get into this, I just wanted to kind of reiterate a couple of things and kind of piggyback on what Earl said. When we go into this, this is a collaborative conversation between HR and the other department heads. And we go into this strategizing every year on, and prioritizing what the needs are for staff in each department, obviously with our budgeted resources. And then we have a lot of conversations with Lee and Earl on, you know, sustainability of what we want to achieve. So this is, this proposal here is a collaborative effort. And I just want to thank the other department heads working with us because it's really important that everybody's involved in this. So I just want to kind of emphasize that before we get into the plan itself. As far as the plan, we talked through the budget process. I think when we did our compensation proposal, we proposed the methodology of doing a COLA increase of 3.4% plus the experience step grade. I think when we did the cost analysis, I think it was probably about a roughly $585,000 additional investment in base salary costs in the budget. So wanted to just reemphasize that. So what we've done here is pretty simple this year. We have taken the compensation plan. And when we talk about the COLA, we simply increased the salary bands, the minimum, maximum by 3.4% to the adjusted rate. And then part of that methodology is when you take an employee and you plug them into that scale with their years of experience for the next step, and that calculates their salary. I think we've talked about that. And I've got a chart in here that shows an example of that, if you want to see how that methodology is. So it's pretty systematic. One thing I did want to point out is we went and applied that same methodology to all positions. All positions, with the exception of five classifications, did align correctly. In, on page two of the memo, there are five positions that, when we applied that, they did not align correctly. Part of that was, we feel like last year when we did the, if you remember, we did the COLA adjustment, we said that everybody would get at least 6.5% minimum. Because even if they weren't, when we did the methodology, if they were below 6.5%, we brought them up to that range. And we feel like this is a kind of a hangover from some of that, plus some market variances. The one thing is, though, I do want to ensure that these, these positions, no one's getting less than 3.4% increase for the plan year. And the positions we're discussing is, and I've got them bullet point here, is two telecommunications officers, an athletic supervisor, the community liaison, and the utility director are the five positions that didn't align. But what that essentially means is they're just not aligned on, they're within the range of their compensation, but they're not aligned exactly with their experience scale. They're not getting less, they're just not aligned correctly, but they still would go up 3.4%. I had a conversation with Earl this week about it, and we think we can correct that through the budget process. But the one thing, when we look at those position outliers, is we want to make sure that they're not misaligned with their peers' positions. And so when we looked at that, they were aligned correctly, so I just want to point that out. Outside of those five outliers, it's a very clean plan this year. We, again, essentially, we raised the grades by 3.4% across the board and then applied the experience scale methodology, and that calculates employees' salaries, based on all those factors that we discussed in our proposal back in April. As far as the other items, you know, the major, we talked about reclassification recommendations, so we do have those in there. So we have two reclassifications. One is the utility clerk. We've had a lot of conversations about bringing that position more in line with other similar situated clerk positions. And that's really, and the reason for that is based on the duties, responsibilities, and accountability of that job. And so essentially, what we're recommending is moving that from that U1 classification to the NH2, which what that would do is that would put that on par with other clerk positions throughout the city. That compensation would be adjusted to, you know, again, really align it more with the duties and responsibilities of that position. And, and we've also talked about, we've had a difficult time recruitment and retention for that position. We think part of that is the salary levels, and we've had high turnover. I think we all can agree in this room that that's a, is a very high-demand job that needs to be adjusted, especially for the duties. And again, it's, it's a key job because it's the first, these are the first people that the public sees when they walk in the building. And so they get, they have a lot on their plate, and we think that's justified in making that change. The other one is, we talked about this, too, is the community center coordinator. Josh and I had a lot of conversations about that. And simply, we had a, we have a vacant assistant maintenance supervisor of athletics position. We feel like with our maintenance staff, we can, in talking to Josh and Tommy, we wanted to reclassify that vacant position to focus on a community center coordinator. That would be a lateral adjustment, the same salary levels, just re-titled it, and then we'll draft a new job description and be able to start the recruitment process for that position, once they feel like they're ready to start that. So that's really the reclassifications. You know, we just have those two changes, plus the increase on the COLA ranges. Nothing else has changed as far as the reclassification outside of these two items. And again, if you look, when you look at the ranges, all ranges are going up 3.4%. Now, piggybacking off that, we do have our authorized positions. One thing I didn't have here, I want to point out, is I did not include the additional dispatcher. I had it outlined, summary in here, as Earl alluded to. We went back, Chief Gray and I looked at that, and we have a recommendation on how to, as Earl alluded to, how to reallocate funds. So essentially, we have, that position would have cost us $65,000, but we have $40,000 in part-time overtime, but that's budgeted, that we can move into that. And then we also feel like that with creating an additional position, that's going to reduce the amount of overtime. So we feel like we will not have to change the 911 budget, and we can pay for that by making those changes. So I didn't have that in here, but in summary, once I add that back in, is we'll have, fiscal year '24, you had 175 authorized positions. So if you add the dispatcher in, that would give you 176 authorized full-time positions for fiscal year '25. The primary changes here is we are, we talked about police. We do have the two deferred police positions back in the budget that we deferred mid-year. But we also are going to reauthorize one of those, are recommending reauthorizing one from a police officer to a police sergeant. That was at the, at the request of Chief Gray, Chief Don, through the budget process. What that would do for PD is that would keep you at 41 authorized positions. That's the same level that you had last year before we deferred the two positions. So essentially, you're bringing back the two officers, but you're going to take one of those officers and convert it to a sergeant. But it'd still have the same patrol head, number of headcount that you had before we deferred those two positions. So, so in simplest terms, a PD will still open up and have two vacant positions that they'll need to fill, you know, starting in July.
Can you give the numbers again, total employees for?
Yes, sir. So if fiscal year '24 was 175, adding back in the dispatcher, you'd have a total of 176 positions in the budget process. And the reason that number doesn't change is because we, that number was generated before we deferred those police positions, because we did that mid-year. If you remember, we did that back in January. And then on the fire side, again, that also, same thing there, is you're going to bring back that one deferred position. And then also, we're asking for bringing, adding the additional firefighter that we talked about through the budget process. So what that do is that, currently, you've got 31 authorized positions in the fire department. That would move you up to 32, bringing back the deferred position, plus adding one more firefighter. And talking with Chief Simpson, the goal there is to try to do, hire one recruit and then possibly hire one lateral. But obviously, the immediate need is to hire the recruit because the academy starts in August. So we want to start that recruitment process. Really, we'd have to start that in June to meet that target of August for the recruit academy. And then, of course, communications, I talked about that already. If we add in that dispatcher, they've got 14 positions, but it would create, move them to 15 authorized positions. Part of that, too, though, is we talked about in dispatch, moving one position from a dispatcher to a senior telecommunications officer, which is in the authorized position changes. So you're going to have more supervision on staff, plus add one more dispatcher. But you only will hire one more position because you'll probably, most likely, hire internally for that senior telecommunications officer. And then, I know you guys, we talked a lot about codes enforcement, and I was going to kind of bullet point this as I was listening to Earl's conversation, is talking to Chief Gray and Chief Don, you know, we had two communication, excuse me, two codes enforcement officers in fiscal year '24. One of those was vacated mid-year, we still have one. So right now, they're going through some, Chief Don, tell me if I'm wrong here, but if you're going through reassessing organizationally what your needs are, and for this year, we recommended deferring that one position. But that doesn't mean you defer long-term, depending on what they just need to look at organizationally, because you've got your ABC captain, and there's still a lot of assessments there that they've got to look at. So they wanted to take a step back and look at things organizationally for this year in that department. So that, and then also, you were talking, we had, I think we have one part-time position that gets removed out of codes enforcement, so that's where you see your major personnel changes. And then, that you all asked about earlier. And then, of course, Parks and Rec, just, you know, we talked about the reclassification there of the authorized, or excuse me, the maintenance supervisor, the community center coordinator. But your headcount doesn't change, so you have eight authorized full-time positions within Parks and Recreation. You run anywhere on part-time. We have about 12 permanent part-time employees that work year-round. Most of those are within the Bunny Davis Center and some other areas. And then you, seasonally, we average anywhere from 120 to 130 seasonal employees now. So they are expanding that, and that's been calculated, you know, into the budget for Parks and Rec. A lot of, you know, obviously, that ties into the investments you're making in capital and programs out there with the reason those numbers are increasing. All right. And so, again, I've got the outline here for the telecommunicator as far as the cost mechanisms. But this year is pretty straightforward, the compensation methodology, you know, it's, when you look at it on average, like I said, no one's getting less than 3.4%. And on average, you know, it's anywhere from between 3.4% to probably 4.6% increase for individuals. But there's a lot of variables there that we talked about with, you know, range that they're in, their experience level, their step increments. But we feel like this is a really good program this year. And it's, overall, it's minimal changes compared to what we've done in years past. But this is based on what we feel like is priorities budgetarily, also based on department head feedback and your feedback as well through the budget process. And so that's pretty much everything, is about as simple as I can put it. And then I'll go ahead and take any questions you have.
Well, thank you, sir. Questions, comments? Well, Lee, what was the total increase in personnel costs? Just everybody, do you know?
Yeah, it's, the base increase estimated was 585,000.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's before retirement taxes, but that's your base salary adjustments.
Could you repeat that, please?
Yes, sir, it's 585,284 was the estimate. And that was basically an estimated increase of 3% on the base salaries.
Thank you, Randy.
And that includes the extra firefighter and the extra, while converting the 911?
No, that did not, that was before that. So the additional positions would be on top of that, which was approximately, what is it? Roughly $200,000. So really, when you add those in, you're looking rough, more closer to probably 800,000.
So it is in the budget, it's in the budgeted numbers. It's just Randy didn't have a chance to do the math with the additional two employees.
Okay, so it's in the big pack.
It's in the numbers, with the appropriations that you're budgeting.
Yeah, because when we did the original compensation draft, it was with the, because like Earl always said, we start conservatively, look at that, and then we see what we can achieve once we add that. So that original proposal did not include those deferred positions because at that time, we didn't know what our, what we were going to do with those positions. But in simple terms, it's, yeah, it's roughly about 800,000 increase. So when you look at, you talk about your human capital, you're vested heavily into, you know, your safety personnel, and you continue to make progressions based on the public's desires. One thing I, and I just want, this is a sidebar, but this is just something that Marshall and I have been working on. So we look at, when you go back and you look at the public, and we've talked about water utilities. I don't know if you recall, back in November, we applied for an EPA grant for water infantil, for water staffing. That was through a partnership with BCTC. And so we're hoping that, and we just talked to them last week, we're hoping to hear something this summer. If we get that grant, that's, the goal there is to fund additional operator positions. The minimum amount on that grant is 250,000, the maximum is a million dollars. There's no match required by the city. And I believe, I have to go back and look at the guidelines, but I believe it's four-year funding. So that's kind of the strategy that we took to try to add additional staffing to water utilities because we still need to, you know, we don't want to lose sight of that. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. That was part of our strategy when we started talking about water utilities. Hopefully, we'll get those funds, some of those funds. And because the average water operator trainees, probably with this salary range, I'm just estimating probably about 80,000 to 90,000 for a trainee. If you get someone, obviously, licensed, you're going to pay more. But, so if we, even if we got the minimum amount of 250,000, that would allow us to at least hire probably a minimum of two operators, possibly three, depending on where we go with that. So I just wanted to point that out.
That's good, good information, yeah.
You had said earlier that the federal guidelines changed for salaries, people that are salaried. Did that affect, how did that affect us?
It did, a good question. So we're going to have three positions, and I know, and that's a, that's a pretty steep jump. They did a 63% increase on the salary threshold. So July 1st, it goes to 43,000. January 1st, it goes to 58, meaning anything below that has to be paid overtime. We do have three positions in Parks and Recreation that we are going to have to convert to hourly, based on those guidelines, because they are non-exempt.
based on those guidelines, because they are non, they are exempt. They meet the definition of exempt based on the duties test, but the salary thresholds even, and I was kind of waiting to see how these ranges play out before we looked at that, because I didn't know what our ranges were going to be. But yeah, so the three of those positions, and it would be your recreation supervisor, your athletic supervisor, and your maintenance supervisor. So what we did is through that budget process, we went back and adjust, their base salaries don't change. But what we did is we went back and adjusted and had to add more to overtime based on those jobs. Because we, those jobs do work a lot of hours. But unfortunately, with the guidelines, they are, um, they are going to be paid overtime.
One of the advantages of going to Paylosty is to be able to analyze that a lot easier when in terms of hours worked and that kind of thing. So it, it wasn't, um, a massive exercise to estimate what that impact would be. Just because of the sheer number of employees, it was a manageable exercise for him. Uh, if it was 10, 15 employees, he would not necessarily have liked that as much in terms of.
Well, of extra work. And I'll say this, it's, uh, it's, it's a challenge, not just for the city, it's a change, it's a major, major sweeping employment law change, a significant one. Don't know where this is going to go. Actually, it's, I just saw this week, uh, business groups filed a suit in US court in Texas. So there may possibly be an injunction on that, but which it was the last time they did this, they put an injunction on it and put a hold on it for about, about a year or two. We can't plan for that, obviously, but, so what my recommendation is, is that while these three classifications come July 1st are under the threshold, I think it's wise to go ahead and move them to non-exempt status July 1st, because you're going to have to move them in January anyway. It convolutes the process. So I think we recommend doing that. And like Earl said, we've got a lot more technology through our time and attendance that you can really track, um, your overtime usage and, but it is a cost. I mean, there, there's a cost to it, you know, there's going to be an increase. But I think you can offset that with, in talking to Tommy and stuff, flexible work schedules, different schedules. And, uh, you know, supplement some things with part-time staff. So there is, we're going to, we've got the the resources to control some of those costs. But unfortunately, we are going to have to move them to hourly. We just don't have a choice in that matter.
But, but again, it's good, we only have three. But it's also very important to us, I think, that, uh, we take care of all of our employees. And getting them to that level is the right thing for us to do and do it during this process.
The i- industry-wide, community-wide, it's going to have a much bigger impact in the job market than, so, so that's what's our concern. You know, we, we can accommodate our three and be compliant, which we should be immediately, like, we shouldn't take a risk. I mean, the, some people will not cha- make that change. And then i- if there is a lawsuit, and you can go back and have to back pay people and do all kinds of crazy things. Make, making the change, go ahead and making the change commits to being compliant regardless. But there's, it, nationally, or, I mean, that's going to be a big deal. I mean, that's going to impact your, your occupational license and taxes.
Yeah. And, uh, education's another one too, because we talked about that. A lot of your teachers fall under that threshold. Teachers meet the exemption under the professional exemption status. So a lot of teachers, you know, they're, they're below the salary threshold, but they're, they're classified as exempt. So I don't know what's going to happen. We kind of, I've been kind of seeing what other employers are going to do. Locally, we don't know. Like Earl said, what you're probably going to see is one of two things. And again, it's all situational based, based on that employer's. One, some employers, if their employees are close to the threshold, they may just increase their salary above that threshold, which still means an increase in occupational revenue, right? Because you're increasing the salaries. Or they may just end up having to either hire additional people, cap people's hours at 40 hours, or have to pay the overtime. So either way, I think you're going to see an increase.
Or decrease labor.
Or decrease labor, yeah, that too. Yeah. So it's, it's, it's hard to know where this is going to go, but it's, uh, very interesting for sure. You know, and I always go back to the education side, because I think the teachers is one of those unique ones where most of those positions, typically, they're at a lower salary level, but they're all classified as exempt because of the way the, the rules are written with the Department of Labor. So be very interesting to see how this all plays out.
Might, might cause Ms. Brown now want to go back to work.
Listen, my wife's a teacher, and she's, uh, she was already bending my ear, asking me a thousand different questions. I was like, take a deep breath. I said, it all depends on your, how your school district approaches it. So.
Well, it's really good that we're able to do it, but it can have major impact on a lot of things in our community. Outside of city government. But also, it also says, though, that as an organization, you all have convinced us to start paying people a, oh, a salary, salary that says to them that they're important to us.
Well, and I'll say for the city, I think we're doing a great job. And I'll thank everybody here for at least giving us the time to present these and as a collective group. But we're progressively moving forward with investing in staff. Uh, I was talking to Earl today, we've got some chan- we got to get really creative this year with some different things, like we talked about our succession plan. That's like topping our list of, you know, that's probably a top priority. Not probably, it is. And then, um, we've got to get, really start thinking about other things like total rewards and some different things that we're talking about. To keep staff, you know, retention and recruitment, because we have a really good workforce, and we're getting a good applicant pool, those jobs, but we got to keep pressing for it. Because this market's going to continue to be a challenge. It just is. But, um, but I think, you know, we're, we're, we're in a good place, and hopefully, we can keep making good progression.
Well, it also says to me that, uh, it's to say to our community that we, uh, should all be focused on the importance of economic development, because that's what takes care of some of that stuff. And the city's going to run out of different ways to finance and pay employees unless we do some other things that, you know, there's some words that we don't like to use when it comes to salaries and raising money. But this, this is a important time for our entire community.
It really is, especially when you talk about public safety, and then we talk about the water utilities too, just because of those labor shortages. It's, uh, you know, it's really, we've got to really think about that, because that's major economic development components right there with, you know. And so, uh.
I want to ask folks to continue to raise their salaries around us. It forces us into that ballgame as well. And we rightfully should be involved in it, but.
So. So that's everything I have, unless there's any questions or feedback. And we want to do this a little differently this year, because typically, I know we bring this for a first reading ordinance. I wanted to do it here so we could open up for discussion and feedback. And that way, you all could provide us directive on any things you want us to, to, a different, if you see a different direction you want us to go in, then we'll definitely want to do that.
Randy, could you, one, one more time, go over the total, uh, full-time employees in each one of these departments after the additions? I'd like to.
Yeah, yeah. So in the authorized position, so if, I didn't have, again, I didn't have the dispatcher in here, but adding the dispatcher in, we'd have 176.
Not, not total, just by department.
Oh, yeah, sure. So legislative, you, you'd have nine total full-time employees. Finance is five. Uh, IT's four. Police is 41. Uh, fires 32. Codes enforcement is one. Communications, with the amendment to the dispatcher, it would move, it would go to 15. Public works is eight. Storm waters, five. And again, these are all by fun, fun, just so you know. And then, uh, cemetery's two. And then on the utility side, you have 10 in utility administration. You'll have 11 at your water plant. Uh, you have nine in water distribution. You have eight in the sewer treatment plant. You have, uh, six in sewer collections. One at the Parival Water Distribution. One for parking enforcement. And then in Parks and Recreation, you have eight. And these are full-time positions.
Eight, okay. And what was the police?
Uh, police was, uh, 41.
Okay. Thank you. And what was the fire?
Uh, fire was 32. So it goes from 31 to 32 with the addition of the, adding the extra firefighter we discussed.
Okay. And then you'll upgrade this chart before our meeting?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll all include the changes for 911, which would be the only change that I didn't have incorporated. Because I wasn't sure at the time, we wanted to present it for discussion.
And this will be presented, same chance we present the budget.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Don't, don't wrenches, nope.
At the 11th hour, if we need to make a change.
Well, like, before we do that, now, any other questions for Mr. Boyd? What, don't, no needing any necessarily, but I got to ask that, right? It was $7.95.
Four dollars. That's kind of high, actually. I, actually, I was more like a dollar and a quarter, I think, is what I put in the budget. Yeah, oh, yeah. You know what? That's actually, yeah, we got, we do accept volunteer app, yeah. Kevin, we do accept volunteer applications.
I should have said any, any legitimate questions for Mr. Boyd, right?
That's a good point.
Okay. Thank you, Randy.
All right, thank you.
And thank you for putting the classification plan, uh, ahead of time.
Yes.
To look at. So thank you.
We have one other item on our agenda.
So we are going to need to strike that from our agenda. We did not have the resolution ready. I don't know how you do that procedurally, because my city clerk is, um, preparing for her wedding.
We'll do that. We'll do that Monday.
Okay.
Yeah.
So let the records, uh, state that, uh, the third item on our agenda of this special call meeting was, uh, deleted, was postponed to a later date. So with that said, uh, thanks again to staff, thanks to fellow commissioners for your attendance and your, uh, work on helping us move this process forward. So the chair would entertain a motion for adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Show moved.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. There's, there's another piece of information that needed to be shared, but I'm like Kevin, I can't think of it right now. So all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, you can stay.